Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for June 5th, 2024 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence. Think about what you would like to think about. Thank you. If we'd all please rise and join Alderman Kelly in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Mr. Crump, please call the room.
Alderman Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinhards?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
Ann Burkholder?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but please ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. Just as a reminder for the folks in here, if you have a cellphone, if you'd be kind enough to put it on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any item, please wait to be recognized, come to the podium, the microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. When addressing the council, please address us as the body of the staff as a body and not any individual. We'll try and be as best we can be respectful of you. Please do that with us. Thank you very much for coming. Ms. Merritt, any administrator update tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update for tonight. Now that we are here in June, there are a number of summer events that will be kicking off where this city is a sponsor. So everything from Party in the Park to Red, White &amp; Boom to the BICS Weekend. So I would encourage anyone from the public to check out the website and see what's ahead for the summer. And with that, we're back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. We have two public hearings this evening, both under Public Works. So Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will read. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2024 Bridge Maintenance Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the City Hall Air Handling Unit upgrades. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next is Petitions Communications. I have one. I just want to say thanks to VisiQuod Cities and Davenport's city staff and anybody else who is involved. We have, we have, have, had, and still have over 1,500 business and industry organizations from around the state of Iowa here in Davenport for their annual conference. I was honored to help welcome them and see the governor and talk with many of those folks, to include consulates and other folks from around the world that came and are still in Davenport enjoying our city. And I just want to express my thanks again to everybody involved because the comments from many unsolicited, wonderful city, wonderful downtown, thank you very much. The hospitality and welcoming feeling for all of us has been awesome, and they look forward to coming back. So whoever might have been involved in this, or still is involved or going to be involved because they're still here, thank you very much. Anyone else? I see Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two items this evening to discuss. The first is just an update on the search for a city administrator. So the executive search firm was on site last month and met with all elected officials individually and the special committee as a group. The position will be posted after the city council gives final approval for the procedures, qualifications, criteria, and budget per the city code. That item appears on this week's cycle, so you'll see that on the finance agenda. Once the city council has approved that, the position will be posted, and I'm happy to say that we are continuing to move along and remain on target for our September hiring date. The second item I have is for Mr. Dyson. Last year, we had talked about looking at our ordinance for electric bikes and motorized vehicles and different types of vehicles on our bike path, and I think that the Parks Advisory Board and your staff have been looking at it. But we also now have the new Trails Committee, so I was hoping that you could give us an update on that. What I would really like to see is maybe have something coming back to the council yet this year.
Sure, absolutely. Chad Dyson, Parks and Rec Director. Yes, we recently formed a Trails Committee as an offshoot of the Park Advisory Board Committee that will be reviewing not only that ordinance and with some recommendations pertaining to motorized or e-bikes as they're popularly referred to, along with also just general trail advocacy and general trail use in the community. So they just kicked off the process. I would anticipate something coming back within the next six weeks, six to eight weeks for council to review on that.
Okay. That's great news. Thank you.
Yep.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to, it was briefly mentioned, but to give you the details. So the first Party in the Park is not tomorrow, but it's a week from tomorrow, Thursday, July 14th, June 14th, and it is at Wayland Park, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So please come out. This is the kickoff event. There will be one two weeks later in Lindsay Park, but near the Village, which will be your first time there, but hope you can join us out at Wayland Park for Party in the Park next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Jobson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A few things. First, this upcoming Tuesday, June 11th, 6:30 p.m. at Duck Creek Park Lodge will be the next sixth ward meeting. We'll have some representative from Quad City Tenant Alliance presenting, so invite everybody to come out and look forward to those that can attend. The other things, when I first started kind of having an adult moment as living here in Davenport and start kind of paying attention to city government was when the neighborhood in which I reside started lobbying against rezoning for the casino, right? Started coming down to planning and zoning commission meetings, started paying attention to city council, and just, like I said, kind of having an adult moment, you know, paying a little bit more attention to what's going on. You know, that kind of fostered, you know, paying attention to some other things, rezoning with Costco, rezoning with the Torsha development right there, the Portillo's development. And one of the things I've come to learn is that sometimes, you know, the change that comes through isn't as bad as we all think it's going to be, right? Living pretty close to the casino, I mean, if you would have polled the people that lived in my neighborhood, we would have thought that the world would implode, right? Traffic along Jersey Ridge isn't that horrible. We don't have people flying through our neighborhood. And so we had a discussion yesterday, a pretty lengthy discussion revolving around the one ways and the conversion. And so I just, speaking to my colleagues, remember, the change probably isn't as bad as we think it's going to be. I say that now being one of the people that lobbied pretty hard against conversion, right? If you want to go back and watch the video from those meetings, like Alderman Gripp pointed out yesterday, there were some pretty painful discussions, you know? Being the one person that had the question called on them with a second and then a vote taken, for those of you who don't know, that's like a point of order on steroids, right? So having that happen to them, you know, in my eight years of paying attention to the council, I think that's the only time I've seen that happen. And so there were some very painful discussions. There were some lengthy discussions. You know, in the end, the vote did not go the way in which I desired, but the process was seen through. And so I say this to my colleagues from the point of, I really don't care to have another discussion on this matter, but if we do, I'll be part of it. And I just, I say this to you, just, again, you know, the change that was proposed and that was voted through might not be as bad as we think it's going to be. So for what it's worth, that's it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Reinhards.
Just a quick note that, thank you, just a quick note, there'll be no eighth ward meeting at Red Hawk this month. I will be out of town. We will have another one in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I want to send a shout out to Brenda Drew Peoples and her family. If you guys know Brenda Drew, she did a lot in the city, and she's a lawyer in the city of Davenport. She's going through some hard times right now, so if you guys keep her and her family lifted up in prayer, I really appreciate that, all the work she did in the civil rights and just in my community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four items of discussion. The first, the four, Community Development, Public Safety, Public Works, and Finance. The first one's Community Development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhards will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items on our agenda for discussion this evening. The first item is a third consideration, ordinance for case ORD 24-02, being the request of the city of Davenport to amend Chapter 17.08 entitled Uses of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by Updating the Billboard Definition and Principal Use Standards. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Please step to the left and state your name and address or ward.
Gary Cornet, Seventh Ward. You've heard me up here several times about this. I looked at the requirements for billboards, and I think that the signs that are advertising marijuana use are not, should not be allowed in our, in this area or in this state because they don't meet, they're breaking a federal law, and they're breaking state law. They're telling people that it's okay to go perform interstate transportation of a controlled substance, and we're sitting here saying, yeah, it's okay. You know, come on back. Go to Illinois and buy your drugs and come back here. Not a problem. It's illegal here. You know, if it was legal here, it wouldn't be a problem, but it isn't. So why do we let them advertise here? You know, it's not good for the community. I mean, I'm sure the police force doesn't want to see increased use of drugs, you know? I mean, I've heard that the police don't even bother with marijuana stops anymore, but you know, come on, enforce the rules. I don't think, if you look at the restrict, you know, the requirements for those, they cannot be in any way, any violation of federal, state, or local laws. So I think that the city should take a stance and be proactive in this and stop the signs from being allowed to advertise the sale of marijuana in Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration, ordinance for case ROW 24-02, being the request of the city of Davenport, Iowa to vacate a portion of Lorton Place between Lorton Avenue and Lombard Court. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item moves on. Alderman Reinhards, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move items one and two to the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, our agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhards. Next area is Public Safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First item under the Public Safety Agenda is a resolution approving street lane and public ground closure requests on the list of dates and time for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Kendrick Kaufman, Oak Street, Fourth of July block party, 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Thursday, July 4th, 2024, closure, Oak Street from West 43rd Street to West 45th Street. Next, Friends of MLK Summer Gospel Festival, MLK Park, 501 Brady Street, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, July 6th, 2024, closure, East 5th Street from Brady Street to west of the parking lot of 501 Brady Street, a portion of the north-south alley between Brady Street and Perry Street from East 5th Street to just past the railroad bridge. Next, BIC 7, Bechtel Trust Senior BICS Downtown Riverfront, 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024, closure, Riverfront Trail from Harrison Street to Marquette Street. And last, Village of East Davenport Business Association Wine Walk, Village of East Davenport, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, August 10th, 2024, or Saturday, August 17th, 2024, closures, East 11th Street from Mound Street to Jersey Ridge Road, Christie Street from East 11th Street to south of the alley, Jersey Ridge Road from East 11th Street to south of the alley. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Please step to the name or podium, name, order, address, please.
Gary Cornet, Seventh Ward. I was just wondering, when these people request the street blockages, do they contribute to, you know, having the police presence or anything that's required for that? Or do, you know, the city just do it out of the good of their heart? Nobody knows?
Well, as you know, or should know, we did not dialogue at this point in time. We'll take your questions.
Okay.
Is there anyone else from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Alderman McGinnis?
Yes, if someone could speak to the question, that would be great. Thanks.
So I think it depends if there's going to be alcohol at the event. I think police are required to be there or some kind of security. Most of these are, don't have alcohol being served at the event, so it's not required, I don't think, to have police. A lot of our events do have an off-duty officer, or they will hire them through special events, though. Block parties, though, they're not required.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two, motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Davenport North Little League, end of season celebration, Ridgeview Park, 1819 Ridgeview Drive, approximately 15 to 20 minutes between 8:40 p.m. and 9:30 p.m. Friday, June 14th, 2024, or Friday, June 21st, 2024, for the rain date, fireworks over 50 DBA. Next, J&amp;M Displays Incorporated, fireworks rhythm city casino and resort, 7077 Elmore Avenue, approximately 15 to 20 minutes between 9:00 p.m. and 9:45 p.m. Saturday, June 15th, 2024, fireworks over 50 DBA. Next, The Meat Market, kickoff to summer party, 1629 Washington Street, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, June 22nd, 2024, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Next, Friends of MLK Summer Gospel Festival, MLK Park, 501 Brady Street, 12:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. Saturday, July 6th, 2024, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Next, Jennifer Wrangle Birthday Party, 2430 Telegraph Road, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Saturday, July 13th, 2024, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. And last, Village of East Davenport Business Association Wine Walk, Village of East Davenport, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, August 10th, 2024, or Saturday, August 17th, 2024, for rain date, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Next, we have item number three. Before I read these, though, I will ask for a motion to delete one of the items as it will not be occurring, and that is the Daiquiri Factory, 303 West 3rd Street License, Temporary Outdoor Area, June 14th to 16th, Type Class C Liquor On Premises. Is there a motion to delete? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, with noting that deletion, I will now read those items under Section A, New License, New Owner, Temporary Permit, Temporary Outdoor Area, Location, Transfer, et cetera. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, we have the German American Heritage Center, 712 West 2nd Street, Temporary Event, June 29th, License Type Special Class C Beer/Wine On Premises. Next, Stop Box Brewing, 210 East River Drive, Number 101, Temporary Extended Outdoor Area, June 14th, License Type Class C Liquor On Premises. Next, The Vintage Wine Bar, 421 West River Drive, Temporary Outdoor Area, Weekends Through October, License Type Class C Beer/Wine On Premises. Next, Shiki Hibachi Sushi Incorporated, 3839 North Brady Street, New License, License Type Class C Liquor On Premises. And then Quad City Air Show, 9010 Harrison Street, Temporary Outdoor Event, June 19th through 23rd, License Type Class C Liquor On Premises. And then we have those items under Section B, the Annual License Renewals, which I will not read, but are there for your review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to put all items on Public Safety to consent agenda. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That ends Public Safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn. Next series is Public Works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the Warren Street, West 9th Street, the West 14th Street Mill and Overlay Project by Hawkeye Paving Corporation in the amount of $531,447.53. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
I'm having a problem with this button that won't go dark, so don't, I'll raise my hand.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting the work completed under the South Clark Street, Rockingham Road to Blackhawk Creek Rehabilitation Project by Langman Construction in the amount of $467,092.80. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 46th Street Bridge over Cardinal Creek Replacement Project by Taylor Construction in the amount of $312,330.22. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under the Duck Creek Trail Mill and Overlay Project by Langman Construction in the amount of $168,618.73. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving change order number one to C2 Creative Concrete in the amount of $130,000 for the CY 2024 ADA Ramp Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the East Locust Street, Grand Avenue to Eastern Avenue Rehabilitation Project to Hawkeye Paving in the amount of $1665,471.40. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the Emerald Drive, West 14th Street to West Locust Street Reconstruction Project to Langman Construction in the amount of $631,404.29. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding a contract for the SRF Duck Creek Golf Wetland Project to Lawns Unlimited in the amount of $272,781.86. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution awarding a contract for the preliminary engineering services for the East 13th Street Bridge over Canadian Pacific Kansas City Railroad Project to Ventor Kim in the amount not to exceed $89,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council?
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm glad to see this coming. I'm sure Alderman Kelly is as well. This is the 13th Street Bridge that has had to be closed for a number of years, separate, dividing that neighborhood there. We were able to negotiate with Canadian Pacific to not, to not have to do their height restrictions, which would have been sort of a disastrous design within the neighborhood. The old heights are going to be allowed for this project, and that's helpful for the neighborhood. So this is, I know the people there are very excited, and I'm glad to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you very much. Are we excited to see this coming forward? So this is like a block away from my house, so this is going to be tremendous to get that flow of traffic to come back through where we don't have to have all these streets that have these excess amount of traffic, like my own. So it'd be just nice. So I'm so excited for this project, and I'm excited for this block, this neighborhood, and I look forward to the completion of this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2024 Bridge Maintenance Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the City Hall Air Handling Unit Upgrades Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Judith Lee, Second Ward. And I would like to ask you, Chairman Dunn, if you would ask Clay Merritt a question for me about, that's related to this. Several years ago, I provided him some information about a very, supposedly very efficient and very powerful air handling unit that does not require an entire change to an HVAC system. And he said he was going to call the company and try it and, you know, install it and try it. And I was wondering if you'd be able to ask what the status of that is.
Sure.
Thank you.
Will do. Mr. Merritt, if you're not ready to answer that tonight, or if you are, if not, could you give us an update for next week? And we'll leave that one on consent then. Thank you. Anyone from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on, and I'll read the rest of the items and then ask for comment. Item number 12 is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots, tracts of real estate. Item number 13 is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various tracts of real estate. Item number 14 is a resolution assessing the cost of condemned property demolitions at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 15 is a resolution assessing the cost of replacing sidewalks at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 16 is a resolution assessing the cost of snow removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 17 is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots and tracts of real estate. And item number 18 is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracts of real estate. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of these items?
Yeah, my name is Gary Ecklin, and sorry about my voice. I got poisoned by some chemicals from my next door neighbors, and my voice has not been the same, and my lungs have not been the same since. I want to ask that 13 be put on the discussion agenda for next week, and I promise I will come with prepared remarks if you allow me to. That's the cost of brush and debris. My concern is that debris has been used by race hatred, ethnic hatred, religious hatred members of the Public Works Department. In 2021, a man who, I'm not allowed to identify, but let's call him for the moment, Mr. allegedly fired for slamming a door.
Mr. Ecklin?
Well, I'm not supposed to use people's names, so I'm not using his name, but he came to my house and he said, he pointed to a grapevine and my fruit trees, my dwarf fruit trees, and my other plants, which we all know it's legal to grow blueberries in the city of Davenport, otherwise the police would go to the green thumb tomorrow and shut them down. But he said, he was pointing to this grapevine, he said, that grapevine needs to be gone, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna come with the city truck and a crew, and I'm gonna destroy all of your plants. And I said, that's a three-year-old grapevine in a large clay pot. It's legal. And I said, I said, if that was in the mayor's yard, would that be legal? And he said to me, he said to me, yes. He said, we have different rules for lowlifes and lowlife neighborhoods.
Mr. Ecklin, please, just stick to the point.
Well, the point is that they can, they can declare anything to be debris. They declared my, they declared my dwarf fruit trees to be illegal debris.
We're talking about assessing costs here, not, not actually procedures. I understand, I understand.
They should, I have no idea what they did to these people. Maybe it's all legitimate, maybe it's illegitimate, but, but, but these people cannot be trusted because they, they come into my yard and said, these dwarf fruit trees are illegal. And they came with the city truck and destroyed them, and the people who did that should be in prison.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from council? Seeing none, Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. All items except for eleven and thirteen stay on discussion, and the rest move to consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda has been set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Last area, Nick, but certainly not last, it is last. Finance, Alderman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss. Alderwoman Lynch, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Alderwoman Lynch and I have five items to discuss. The first item, motion directing completion of various parks projects in F Y twenty-twenty-five park development program in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number two, motion approving the purchase of Rakata cameras and equipment from Heartland Business Systems of Little Shoot, Wisconsin, in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number three, motion approving the annual renewal of license and support for OnBase, the city's record management system, in the amount of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item moves on. Item number four, motion awarding a managed service, services agreement for OnBase support and maintenance to an ambient of Verone Nova Scotia in the amount of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Anyone from the public wishing to address this? Council? Seeing none, this item moves on. And last but not least, item number five, a motion approving procedures, qualifications, criteria, and budget for the city administrator recruitment process. Prior to hearing from the public, I will take a point of privilege and ask the Chair of the Committee, Mo Hyder, to please provide the council an update and the background of where we're at.
Thank you, Alderman Newton, and good evening, Mayor Mattson and members of the council. Mo Hyder, and as the Chair of the Mayor Selection Committee, I am pleased to provide an update on the progress of our search for the new city administrator. On May thirteenth, the selection committee met with Colin Bainsinger to gather all the feedback that had been instrumental in developing the position profile and refining our recruitment process. Subsequently, the selection committee conferred with Mayor Mattson to finalize the procedures, qualifications, criteria, and budget necessary for the successful recruitment. These details are enclosed in your packets for your consideration today, and we are requesting your review and support with the aim of obtaining your approval at the upcoming city council meeting on June twelfth. Upon approval, our executive search form will promptly initiate the process of posting the position nationwide and soliciting qualified candidates. And I want to thank you for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, address, or ward.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. I've had a chance to look at the background information and the description for the company's job, as well as the description for the job description itself. I've got two concerns with the description for the company's job that I'd like you to consider before you move forward and vote on this next week. One is, it talks about that the discussion would be held in executive session. The council discussion would be held in executive session and not in a public session. And I've got a real concern with you folks stepping in again and trying to do things outside of the public eye that affects the city because she manages, or he manages, whoever it comes in being, a very major part of what happens in the city. So I would recommend that you take a look at their decision, their, their job description, and make it clear that this would be in a public discussion. We don't have to be able to say anything, but we should be able to hear what the discussion is as it relates to the various candidates and their benefits and disadvantages. The other thing I've got a concern is it emphasizes the mayor. And the mayor, as I've said before, is not the boss of the council. The council is the governing body of this city. And the mayor should not select, the council should select. It's obviously in your purview and authority and not in Mayor Mattson's authority to select the city administrator. It also says, in order, the mayor acting in his executive authority, the city council acting in their legislative authority. That needs to be changed as well before this gets voted on next week. You are not the legislative authority, you are the authority in this city, and the mayor is not. So I am asking you to go back and take a look at the way it's written and address these two issues before it comes up to a vote. If it has to be tabled in order to get legal counsel or whatever, I ask you to do that. But I really ask you, do not give the mayor authority that he does not have as it relates to selecting the city administrator. And if you vote on the process as it's written now, you are giving him authority that he does not have, once again. So I ask you to reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can state your name?
Gary Eklund, I live in this town. I would, again, ask that this be put on the discussion agenda so that I could prepare remarks for next week. There was a person, I think she moved on, but there was a person on the selection committee who I think worked, and again, I think she moved on, but she was on the selection committee, and I think she was the executive director of the Davenport Art Museum. And one of the people up there sits as a board member on that, and I think it's a conflict of interest to have someone up there on a board member of anybody who's on the selection committee because it gets into conflicts of interest and pay raises and who votes on, you know.
Mr. Eklund, please stick to the agenda item.
Again, to conflicts of interest, there was a previous mayor who had a plan to get a lot more money out of the casino.
Mr. Eklund, please stick to the agenda item.
This is very much the agenda item.
That is not the agenda item. Please.
I think it is. I think the casino was the beneficiary of two counts of identity theft that hurt the citizens of Davenport.
Mr. Eklund.
This is very serious because I said.
This is not the agenda item.
I said to the gentleman again that I'm not making any bad remarks about the casino or the gentleman who represents the casino, but the casino was the financial beneficiary of crime.
This is not about the casino. Please.
But he's the.
The agenda item is not about the casino. You're not sticking to the agenda item. You're not following our.
I respectfully, I respectfully disagree. You're a lawyer, and I'm not, and you're elected, and I'm not, but I respectfully disagree.
Please, Mr. Eklund.
I think the selection committee process is very important and needs to be looked at closer.
That's enough, Mr. Eklund.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? State your name, ward or address.
Sheriff Shagner, Third Ward. I'm just wondering if a resolution at some point can be addressed, or a motion can be addressed for a resolution to change the process for how we get our city administrator and let the public be more involved in making the decision of who's actually running the city, since we've learned who is running the city, and it seems to be the city administrator in legal that is running the city? And that's all I will say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone from council? Is legal prepared to explain the code in the, in the process being a state code and not a city ordinance? Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Oh, it is a city code process that's being followed, so, and it sounds like I haven't looked at the committees and the mayor's report and recommendations for the process, but under the Davenport City Code, the committee recommends three individuals to the mayor. The mayor then appoints one of those three individuals, and then the city council then votes on whether to approve the individual. So that's, that's the process that's set forth under the city code.
And do you know if the, what's being brought forth to the council complies with the city code?
So I would, I would have to review it and get back to you on that.
All right, thank you. Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you very much. I just also would like to point out that ordinances, which I believe this follows, and I think you will find that, require six weeks to change. If you, you know, ordinance changes are three cycles, it's six weeks. So we are hopefully moving forward in this process, but I think you will find that it does meet what our code says. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Seeing no one else, and being the last agenda item, I will go to Alderwoman Lynch to please set the agenda.
Thank you. I make a motion to place items one through five on the consent agenda. Do I?
Hear a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, carries. I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman, excuse me, thank you, Alderwoman Lynch and Alderwoman Newton. Next area, other ordinances, resolutions, motions. There are none for tonight. Any other reports, Ms. Merritt? No? So will an alderman please move to go to executive session to discuss strategy with council in matters involving litigation pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five? Is there a motion and a second?
Seven.
Okay, before I have Mr. Krupp call the roll, just want to let everybody know the council will adjourn the meeting after the executive session and will not return to council chambers. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll. Ladies, please sit. Thank you. No, there, no, we're done. No, no, thank you. Mr. Krupp, please call the roll.
Newton?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Jopkin?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Reinharts?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
R Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
T Dunn?
Yes.
And Burkeholder?
Yes.
And yes, Your Honor?
Very good.